October fourteenth, thank you everybody for being here on a federal and state holiday. I know our staff was off today, but thank you everybody for coming in, our department heads, and welcome to our guests and people that are here interested in what we have to talk about here tonight. I'll ask everyone to stand if we can, if you're able. Uh, let's remember Davis and uh, people leave us in an indication and I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Tammy Bailey to leave us, leave us in the uh, pledge allegiance.
That's great. Heavenly Father, we just want to tell you thank you, Lord, take my students, stay safe, the best of all. All we have to do is pray, 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 pray.
Extinction, what is the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank y'all for, as I said, for being here. Thank you, lady and gentleman. Uh, we do have several important subjects, I think, to discuss tonight. Uh, one of them is coming up pretty quick is our budget that we've worked on. But first, uh, kind of a routine matter is uh, our minutes from September twenty-third. We have our minutes prepared. I know we had a, I think we barely had a forum that night. We had some folks out with other matters, but is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve September twenty-third.
We got a motion to approve minutes from September twenty-third, Councilmember Miles, is there a second?
Second.
I didn't get who, who, who was on. Alright, let's see. Got a motion, got a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. The next item, I normally put the mayor's report second, but we'll go ahead and address our budget. We've had, I know we had one um, pretty lengthy workshop that was focused on our budget. We're fortunate that looks like our numbers on income uh, continue to rise, which as anybody knows in a small town, I think that's a blessing. Um, appreciative of our businesses here that provide this revenue and income for us and encourage people to shop local. Um, I think, I want to thank our city clerk, we've worked tirelessly on this to look at real numbers and our department heads have met with her uh, to make sure these numbers are accurate as to expenses and income. And y'all know, we, we try to do things in the year we have extra money, but I think the budget's very accurate and, and spot on, and I appreciate Tammy for, for work on that and getting uh, with these department heads to make sure their departments are funded. Uh, we've been able to buy a lot of equipment over the last year that was budgeted. I can't really recall anything specific in this one. We probably um, got a lot of stuff we needed, so this, this one might be void of some things that we had in there last year, but it's still a positive budget and in the, in the black, so that's good. There are no questions on the budget that we discussed. I would ask for a motion to approve the uh, City of Slocombe fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five. Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hicks. Any other questions amongst council on the discussion on the budget?
I'm party to a comfortable with.
Any other comments, questions, council members? Alright, here none. All in favor, please raise your hand on approval of the budget. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again for everybody who worked on that, and I feel good about that. The next subject is not as easy to talk about. Um, we have it on there, our city clerk position. Tammy is, Bailey has been our clerk, embarrassed to say the same as twenty nineteen, is that right? Twenty nineteen? Tammy has, has sent her uh, notice to us that she is going back to the medical field, and um, I'm proud for her. She's made a decision that's in her best interest, and she's certainly made my life a lot easier over the last five years and a lot of our lives easier. So I'm really gonna, gonna hate to, hate to lose Tammy, but I certainly understand. So we are in a position where uh, we have had to look for and seek out uh, what I think is probably one of the most important positions, if not the most important in the city, which is the city clerk position. Um, everybody's, we appreciate all of our department heads, and obviously we all think that way, and I know the clerk is just as an important position. So everybody works with her, but we had an applicant um, who applied a couple of years ago, uh, Ms. Brooke Knowles. Am I saying her last name? Is that right, Tammy? Brooke um, Brooke lives here in Slocombe. She applied for the position the last time it was open. Um, she has an interest in being here. She's local. She has a child in the, in the uh, school system here. Um, she's expressed interest in coming back and training and learning the position. Uh, so I think that she possesses the qualities and the knowledge, the education to fulfill the clerk's duties here. I know this is um, it's, it's fast. I know, and Tammy, I want to tell her, I appreciate you offering to stay on and, and help with whatever, you know, is required to train her and um, if she should be appointed and help her. So we appreciate that. Um, but I would uh, I would certainly like to nominate uh, Brooke as a person I think is qualified for that position that applied. She had her application in, she's expressed interest. Um, I would like to nominate, and I'll make the motion that upon Tammy's acceptance of her resignation, we would uh, appoint Ms. Brooke Knowles to the position of Slocombe City Clerk. And I would ask if there would be a second to the nomination.
I'll say.
Second by Councilmember Garrett. Um, we do have a motion and a second. I know um, any guy, guys, I know y'all were, it's kind of, I guess it comes to, I'm gonna say it's a, I'm not gonna say it's a shock, Tammy. We know she's making the decision best for her. We, we all, I, I don't like change. I told Tammy that last week. I'm, I'm not a fan of big change. Um, I know it can be good and it, it can be scary, but uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do well, and Tammy feels very good about that. Is that correct, Tammy? And you want to chime in here?
I love the community. I live here, and I will continue to help serve Slocombe and make sure she's trained. I will come back as needed, and I already discussed that with her. I'll come back at the end of the year and help do us in the year duties and continue on as soon as I can.
Thank you, thank you.
So she won't come?
She won't speak.
I was, if y'all would just let me just have just a minute of, of personal privilege here, I was trying to find out, here it is, I actually, she mentioned this the other day, and I don't know if, I hope I'm right on this, but her grandmother uh, was Ms. Hilda Williams, whom I told was city clerk when Lawrence Harris was mayor. Um, that's pretty, do you recall any of y'all?
She worked here, she also worked at the bank.
Worked at the bank and, and worked here when Lawrence Harris was mayor, I think in the late sixties and early seventies. So um, kind of an interesting, an interesting twist to it. I just thought I'd add that to the discussion, but that, that's pretty, pretty interesting. Um, we have a motion and a second. Is there, or is there any other discussion amongst the council?
I would just like to thank Tammy for her dedicated service, not only home duty, but off duty. That job requires a lot of time and attention. She has served with, with dignity and honor and respect, and I appreciate, I know the council does, but I appreciate it, I want to let you know that.
It's my pleasure.
And we're not letting Tammy go, but today was a holiday, but on the twenty-eighth, it's a little secret, we're gonna have a little special, something that Tammy's coming back for, if you'll agree to do that.
Thanks.
Alright, um, so I guess first, is there, I guess we need to do a, a, is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. We're gonna have a roll call vote on this. Um, you ever got, got, I'd love to start on, I guess that's straight and second in the motion. We'll do a roll call vote, motion in a second for Ms. Brooke Knowles to be clerk. Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Miles? Yes, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Alright, so we technically have hired a new clerk, and um, again, we'll have that then on the twenty-eighth, and Tammy will come back, and she'll. I think we, we've offered, we've offered, I know, but we've agreed on that, it's in the budget range, I guess.
Is she a group?
Yes. Is that correct? And um, we'll mention it for future training, and we've worked all those terms out, so. Alright, okay, thank you guys. Um, like Tammy, that's item number three in my report. I want to talk about some, I want to talk about some very good stuff we've got going on here. We sat here for probably three years um, and talked about the paving project. I've asked Ms. Brooke Bennett to be here. He's an engineer with CDG. Um, our project engineer was unable to be here, they actually worked on it, but I know Brooks was approving those plans and looking at all that. So thank you, Brooke, for being here. Um, we just completed a nearly six hundred thousand dollar project in Slocombe, and that's, for those of y'all out here, I know Steve and others that have been here and looked at budgets, it's a lot of money for a small town. Um, it was a four hundred thousand dollar grant. We appreciate our legislators for helping us get that. In the third year, uh, we were wondering if we were ever gonna get it, but uh, we put somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of local money with that, with that for um, to make it a project where we were able to do a little bit of extra. So all I'm gonna say is I'm proud of the paving project. It looks good. Um, we're still working on it. Mark is here, he can answer any of the follow-up stuff that we're doing on cleanup. Um, I know the paving crew is not a hundred percent finished, we've still got a closeout, but I brought, I asked Brooks to be here to, after I said my little piece, which I just did, I want to try to limit this to council at first, and we'll have a public uh, comment section later, but do the council members have any questions or uh, comments of the uh, engineering firm for paving?
I ain't got a thing about, I wouldn't get no air signing off. I went out ninety-one the other day, and of course, God, I'm not like you got old Brooke on that day over. Last time we were gonna pay you, probably signed off, but we, we had all kind of.
Do you have, Brooke, do you have, I know we have a bunch of lists, basically, right? You want to just address that?
Sure, uh, and I, I'll be honest with you, I've gone um, getting kind of covered in on the back end. I went uh, Cox Street, Road Avenue, and Non-Road, and I've gone down, I didn't, I mean, in case Kelly didn't want to go back to my house and just mad at that. But um, I think uh, from, from my riding group, everything was really good. We did have um, initially, three of the four roads were supposed to be an inch and a quarter asphalt. We actually got a really, city got a really good price on asphalt. We were able to do an inch and a half, but the risers that were ordered for those manholes were ordered an inch and a quarter, so there was a quarter inch of a lip there. We've gone back on Cox, and got the contractor kind of fed at those ends, so they're not such a, a bump when you go across them. And, you know, if you guys have something else, if you see something else, we'd be glad to get into address it before we do a closeout.
Let me just stress what Councilmember Miles said. Um, there is a closeout procedure where we have to look at this and sign off, so we're not there yet. Um, we do have a bunch list. I know Guy mentioned, who was our on-the-ground person here, he mentioned a brush that would be brought back by the contractor to sweep the road up. We were able to do a little bit of extra work at the um, fire EMS station, which looks really good on a couple aprons there, and a, and a, an area there, when you went out with really load, that looks good. Right through County Line Drive up to the church, um, that looks good, which is a city road. Um, and I think I'm forgetting one more. We did a little bit to the lagoon there off of ninety-one. Um, so we were able to do a little bit of work, but if you do see a, a spray, a white uh, spray paint in an area, that typically means that that's an area that our folks have designated that needs work on. So in answer to your question, that they will be back. So. Guys, any more questions to paving or comments?
Just information on a complaint, it's not a complaint at all, it's just information. I'm not a paving contractor or whatever, but why is the discrepancy in the lip on one side going down the middle? You know, I would think that when we resurface, it would be flat surface. I know it's gotta be crammed, but you know, down the center line, you've just got a ridge, a small ridge there. What, what is the reason for that?
So, when they, when they pull, when they do that, it's not called, depending on width directly. If it's small enough, you know, they can really, they can crown um, uh, almost the super pay, get, get too much, but they, they gotta pull the exact same pitch going up and going down. Um, most of the time, when you have a, a discrepancy there, it's not, I don't, I'm not giving anybody too much credit here, but most of the time, it's not the paving company that's doing a resurface, it's that in the lower layer of your base layer, the asphalt layer that's there, there's a, at the base weekend on one side, that will, they'll, we're, normally we'll roll it out as best we can, but typically, one side gets to be a little bit more or less when they, when they join it in the same, and if they roll over too much, then you don't have cramp, and then you have a big bloodletting over there, if I don't see. One, one drainage chamber, so you can overdo it, underdo it, but um, typically that's the, they, they, they're, they're too nervous about cutting that crown out.
But it's acceptable, even the way it looks?
Uh, well, I said for driving out at one time, if, if there's something that we need to address, we'll, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Down which particular road did you want to sell?
Uh, one, one's better. Railroad Railroad was pretty bad, in my opinion, though. They painted the stripe over, you don't see it as bad. I mean, it was covered up, but the lip was still there. But, I mean, I was just curious for me, why, you know, it couldn't be flattened out. I've seen it, it gotta have a crown on it, but why it could've been closer?
When they, when they're shooting for two, when they, when they, when they lay it down, they're shooting for specifically for railroad, they're shooting for a hundred sixty-five pounds of asphalt, first square yard. Now, no head contractor hits a hundred and sixty sharp now, it'd be, you know, one fifty or one seventy-two or, you know, but that, that spread rate for later, if they're, if, if they're exact, then yes, it would be perfect. So the, the steel runs got really, yeah, just hanging down. Probably what happened there was they got a little bit more asphalt on one side than other than the other, but all of them, all of the paving came in within the tolerance.
Let's move to the better, no question of that. I mean, it was just a, a comment that, you know, a question I had. Like I said, it weren't complaints, it was just a, just trying to learn. You know, do you know, Brooks, if um, were there, is the stripe been on ninety-one? Do you know this? And if you don't, it's okay, you can find out. The stripe been on ninety-one in railroad, is, is that temporary stripe?
I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that any stripe, because Cox Street has no stripe on yet, I know that for a fact, and from what I can see, just past Kelly that had it, and so anything they've done in the last.
And they may not be, they may not be striped roads, but I'm, I'm saying the ones that, the ones that are striped now.
They have, they have now stripped.
That was the question I had, and it was, I think, and another, I'd kind of go into Don's question, I mean, it, we didn't mill these roads. This was just overlay.
Right.
So I know that there's some, I know that there's some give there, and I know a lot of people have been asking about the dirt that was rolled up when the graders came back to, to, to do your road surface. Mark, I know, I'll get to him in a moment. I think y'all are, y'all are working on that, is that right?
Correct.
So um, I think that looks really good. It did leave a lot of dirt on the road, which we talked about, and had a lot of flooding here lately, which I'm thankful for, but um, once we get the room in here, and I think you clean up the road, it'll look good.
A lot of times, um, when the paving contractor leaves, concerns citizens that the job is done, but their, the job is not over, that there's something that needs to be addressed, a lot of stuff to take care of.
Right, appreciate it.
Mr. Bennett, that was one of the, one of the questions that kept hitting, repeated over and over was the manhole covers, the, the dip, you know. Appreciate your answer on that. I know we said earlier, you gave information that kind of, it's common knowledge to you, but other folks that don't do this, you know, never really think about it. Um, the pipes on ninety-one, where they put the colored pipes in, there's a little, you know, hip. Um, it's, I don't know if you can fix that. I just would like it to be noted that.
Sure.
A lot of money was spent to, to have a smooth road, and the end result was, it's not perfect. Um, Mr. Peoples, I spoke with him earlier today, his big question was, is Kelly Street going to get striped? And I said, you know, I do not know. I know there's cops that have been striped dips, or let me, let me ask. Uh, he was pleased with the actual road. His comment was the manhole covers. And then actually, Chief Allen, it was the, the speeders. Anytime you get a random smooth road, so he asked if you guys could, wanted to monitor Kelly Street, and I told him I got that. Um, do you know what Kelly Street is?
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question. I, I know we did, you know, some of the roads we did last time were striped and some weren't. Um, so I honestly don't, I don't think every road is going to be striped.
It comes down to a, a, a local traffic factor and, and size of the road, whether it's considering, you know, a width and traffic. I don't know, I'll just give this one. I'll, knowing, knowing was cops, was it striped a whore?
I believe so, yes. It was, it was.
I can, most of the times, if it wasn't a whore, you know, I'm not, obviously not gonna have to pay it on, an exception. But if it was, typically, typically it will be, but I'll be glad enough by now.
Thank you.
See what we're at.
Yeah, that's always something we can come back and add. There's always something we can come back and add later, we just don't have it in the.
And not, not to talk, terrible about others, but the, the painting crews uh, in our area, there, there's a limit to know.
You said that very nicely, Brooks.
They either have it, might depend on how straight your lines are. Group them down, and you know.
No, that's all.
Take it for what it's worth. I'll say you made the baseball field, and I gotta, I gotta, I mean, I made a really pretty job, and that's it.
That's great. That was a good way to put it. Thank you, Brooke. Thank y'all. Next in my report, we do have the nature trail. I hope to get this open in the next few weeks. Um, we do have the signage, Mark and I just waiting for it there, and I know he's waiting to put signs up, but he said that the paving things, uh, paving issues to clean up front. This is a very nice trail. Um, you guys know about it, we talked about that for two or three years, but it's finally ready. And it's fall, which is um, a great time, I think, to open it up. So that'll be coming in the next few weeks, and we'll do that, have an event. We'll invite everybody out. If we can, we'll let you know what it is. Please come out and look at that. It's really neat, kind of um, unique to the area, I think. So we'll, we'll do that in the next few weeks. Trick or treat hours, and we'll have one more meeting, but that's October thirty-first, that's on a Thursday night, Halloween, five thirty to eight. Um, also with the, I think, game I know we'll have over there, we host Hartford, for Geneva County, so that's on the thirty-first. So I think that's all I had in my report. Let me just go to, is there any, are there any committee reports now? I know we have some department updates like going on with our departments. Are there any, we'll do committees first. Are there any specific updates or requests that our committees might have, uh, council members?
I think uh, seniors, I think they're getting ready to have pancake uh, I think it's called the uh, November eighth, I believe, I'm not sure right now, but uh, they will become captain. She was part of the, they let them know that they don't pan them, you know, department leaders.
Right.
I mean.
Let me, real quick, I know uh, they had the Joe, uh, couldn't be here tonight, our director, but we did have a peanut bowl for the, the seniors that on October third over at the uh, John Hughes Center in Hartford, and that was a, that was, everybody over there got together for that. I think they had a good time on that. We tried to um, get some things for our seniors. I know that they're proud of, and that, we did get a good report, I think. Tried to, I think I left, if I didn't leave one in everybody's box, I will, they got a good Sarko report. Uh, so seniors doing work. Thank you for that update, Councilmember Davis. Any other updates on committees? Alright, here none. Let's, I'll go to departments. I always pick on Mark last, but I'll pick going first. Um, on the street, uh, street departments, our sanitation.
We're all really good. About the only cleanup we got left is the ninety-one and I think we're trying to narrow it, and hopefully I'm gonna try and maybe about end of the next year.
Okay, I'd love to go with you on that one. Okay, let's, let's plan on that for about Thursday, if we can. If you don't mind. Any other updates? How's the, the new truck, the boat truck?
It's, it's very good. I mean, it's not as smooth as the old one. It's a lot better.
And the old one, I knew, um, Chief, you were gonna help our street department get that on bill deals?
Yes, I got everything tied up, yeah. I want to take some more better pictures on the morning, and I need to get the Joe about getting a reserve set.
Okay.
Time around, it's almost fourteen days before one day, I will do this, I'll go get the last.
Alright.
We'll get you up.
Uh, Mark, on these new roads, we got a published, right? State Department published, you know, that board signed up, make down the road.
It's still there.
So whatever we had, still there.
Correct.
Alright, um, alright, anything else, Mark?
That's all I have.
Alright, anything, Chief Howard, anything from police, police department?
It's doing well. Uh, tomorrow I will get together, uh, as far as on the signs. There's some places I want to get some new signs, but as far as street under signs, and especially on Higgy Street, there's one, one side, I think, there's a school and a couple of, they're trying to get on, wherever there's many places, but I'll get away as good as I can, things going over this.
While we're on the subject of signs, and the two of y'all are very close in proximity here, we've talked about this a lot of times, Mark, and I meet about it a lot. Tammy, I think thinks with Mark, our city clerk thinks a lot with Mark about it. Signs are not cheap. You guys know that, we know that. I think a stop sign's up, what, with inflation now, probably one sign's three hundred bucks, right? I bet it's a hundred fifty? Okay, I'm about it. Alright, so they're not cheap, and sometimes they get gone. Um, but we do need to look at, given the fact of the new paving and some different streets that we've got and some needs we have. Mark, you've had a list of this for a while, right, an ongoing list, so let's just see if we can't, if you've got some, get those to him, Chief, and.
Yes, there's some other, uh, I want, y'all remember when we did with the reserve, we're still doing the reflective dress outs. Uh, you did the same thing on speeding signs and other stuff. Buy the sign as far as the size that you want, based on the letter we just made. They send the specials out there. I've seen, there's another town on Flut, but it's been the same thing, and I think they're averaging thirteen dollars for a speeding sign.
Yeah, because we got an old baby out.
So it might be something, I can reach out to the campus and see as far as getting the materials, like, just give you a better idea as far as versus, if a stop sign costs forty-five bucks, going, if you're gonna make a speed on the side, are you gonna stop signs, Chief?
People love, the city limit signs get gone really quick, and I, I look at that, I guess people might like to hang that in their barn, and it costs us money, but um, I hope that that's stopped happening, but I see, we've got at least two missing right now, so um, that's unfortunate from, we want to let everybody know where our limits are, but um, I'm glad people like us that much. So um, alright, anything else, uh, police, that's police, street, sanitation. Chief Howard, any, any updates from EMS or fire?
Yeah, I'm not saying it, guy, right, he had the gentleman last month, friends, so um, over the last, I would say, four to five months, we've been, uh, reviewing our billing company that we've been using for about ten years. Uh, we noticed some decline in what we were bringing in. Um, and it didn't have to do with our, we noticed unpaid claims, unfiled claims. Um, and we've been trying to work with the company to improve that, but those efforts have not been as successful as we would like. Uh, we've reached out uh, to multiple companies. Uh, we're making around twenty-two hundred calls a year, which is a lot for a town our size, but it's not enough to get some of these larger billing companies to accept this. They want a certain amount of run, uh, because that's also, you know, bigger revenue. Um, we reached out to Enterprise Rescue. Um, they gave us a proposal of um, seven percent to do our billing. We're paying six point two five percent now. Um, but we feel like that the increased revenue we get to, also swapping this company will make up to that difference, and add their local. Um, they will come down and do documentation classes with our employees. Um, and of course, they're just, they're out of road enterprise, uh, if we need something. So um, I would like to ask the council to uh, move to swap to Enterprise Rescue Incorporated, do our nursing, and uh, effective November the thirtieth, and so they will be able to take us. Effective November the 30th, they said they will be able to take us. By then, they're gonna try to get another person hired to, um, help with the load that we're bringing, because we'll bring a lot of runners, so.
Do you know if we have a current contract, a current billing?
Uh, not to my knowledge. I have not been able to find one. Are you? I'm not aware of one either.
Long have we been with that?
Approximately about 10, 11 or 10 years, moving around there.
Do they, um, Enterprise also willing to, I know it's a little bit more, but you're thinking to return?
Yes, their, their, their average collection rate is 94% after, um, all the write offs. Uh, I don't know what particular term for that is, we haven't. Contract for write offs, I guess, yeah. Uh, around 94%, um, our current one that we're using is around pushing 60%. So we're getting a lot better return rate, I believe, um, as it is. So we'll leave those just.
Have we ever used Enterprise in the past? Have, have, have we? I don't think we have.
Yeah, I don't know.
I know several ones that we've contracted with. Yeah. Be a smooth transition. All of our folks can adapt pretty well and keep rocking.
That's right. So one of the reasons we were hesitant at first, um, a lot of the people are comfortable with the current system that we use, which is very important to getting paid for these runs and documentation and legalizing. Um, Enterprise at first did not accommodate that, um, but they made some changes and were able to accommodate our current documentation system. Uh, and they will make it work for us. So um, that's one I'm back to look at going with Enterprise.
Yeah. Any questions, guys?
And I had, I, I gave y'all a quote, uh, from Verizon. I spoke with Marty with Enterprise Rescue. We currently use the uh, Tuff Book laptops. I don't know if y'all are familiar with them or not. They run about $2,500 for a brand new. And we've been buying reefer for about $900 to $1,000 each time. We're down to one borrowed lap, uh, one borrowed iPad from the court system here, and one good backup Tuff Book that we have, just because they're failing, because they're old computers. The suggestion to us from Enterprise Rescue was to use the same setup that they're using, which is iPads. Those iPads can also take a picture of our patient necessity forms, like the sign on the transport patient non-emergency to nursing home and things like that. The face sheets with insurance, that way it can be scanned immediately, put into the PCR. And that is one less thing, um, that Candy, our EMS captain, has to do when she's filing a claim. She already has so much more to do that would help her, um, a lot in speed process to get these claims filed with insurance. And this is also, this quota is for three. We already have one. Uh, that'll put one on each truck, because we can have a ramen was about one time and happens often. And then $60 a month for the three iPads to have internet, so we can post those runs out in the field. We want to wait to get back to the station, and our providers getting backup for the PCR to come back and hope they don't get called and finished within one or two days. So I would ask that, um, that y'all approve for us to swap to Enterprise Rescue for our billing and, um, purchase these iPads at our EMS account, um, to start our patient care portal.
You said you want to come out of y'all account?
Yes.
And how much money are we talking?
For the iPads? Uh, $1,199.97.
For four?
For three. And that is with, uh, protected cases.
Period decline, revised protection on this system.
She, I asked her about that, and she said that it is on there. That was a clerical error.
Don't know if it can go wrong, I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the monthly fee will be paying 400 dollars?
Yes.
All right, so we're beginning, I guess, this is two really separate things we're talking about here, right? But I guess the first one was a request to, um, change billing companies, uh, to Enterprise Rescue, right? To do our billing for EMS. Is that in, Mark? They'll, they'll do both? I mean, I know we have.
No, I do our, our, my, so we.
All right, so that is separate?
Yes.
Okay. Provided there's coverage for that. I know that's an issue.
Yeah.
What's the name of the company? Which is switching to?
Enterprise Rescue, oh, Enterprise.
I'm making a motion, we, uh, move our current billing from its current provider to Enterprise Rescue.
Got a motion by council member White, got a second by council member Garrett, change to Enterprise Rescue for EMS billing. Any questions?
Just make sure we got a contract with a previous.
We'll give it immediately, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Get that prepared and more of us check.
I do have one more question. Was anybody employed by us now doing our billing?
Employed by us?
Yeah, anybody down there at the station now doing our billing at all?
No, we don't do any of it. Ask Candy since that she verifies everything, that everything's needed to send the many to do our company, and she sent.
So her job's gonna stay the same. We're not losing them before we eat down there, we're not gaining them.
That's right.
But her job will stay the same, still go through her before it goes to Enterprise.
That's right. She does all of the, she gathers, she, she lays all the runs, gathers all the reports, does our fire inspections and our community reception.
I still have a full question there.
All right, got a, um, got a motion, got a second. Any other questions?
Would you verify if there is, and there may not be, maybe a new one, but can we also find out what would be, uh, what would be standard etiquette for, I've noticed for our current billing provider, you know, six and citizens on certain day?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or, uh, comments from the council? All right, here none. All in favor of the motion second, please raise your hand. Motion carries. I guess if we need a, I, I really don't see, uh, a need for a, a separate motion on the, um, Verizon contract. I guess if y'all wanna, if y'all wanna do it for our minutes here, it's a, a request by EMS to, you might have to restate this, um, Chief, but it's 1199.97 for three.
Uh, iPads for, uh, emergency medical service report, patient care reports.
Patient care reports. They pay out EMS funds. Is there a motion for that as well? Motion by council member Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Hitts. Any other questions on that motion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Keep anything else.
Tammy, do you want to ask a question on, say the guy on deployment and when and how you want to do them?
Or you can ask him.
Okay, uh, all of our, uh, employees that were on our storm deployment, uh, all of them, we had one crew, um, returned yesterday afternoon when the ambulance got in an accident. We, I immediately called the, um, command center and I said, hey, I understand we have an agreement. We have an ambulance crew, we want to return back immediately. They were packing up, sleeping with 15 minutes. They returned last night, or yesterday afternoon. Uh, the rest of the crews at the boundary got de-mobilized, and they came back, um, this, uh, this morning. While we were down there, uh, we were subcontracting for Packer Emergency Medical Services. They were paying us $215 an hour, um, per hour. Rescue said on our demo, so with the power living system in it, they were paying us $215 an hour for that, for being a burial active crew, which transports obese patients. And for Rescue 8, uh, which was an ALS group with Quentin Helm on, the paramedic, they were paying us $205 an hour. So total, while we were down there, um, our pay for Packer will be $77,327.50. We should expect that within 30 to 60 days, um, upon their return, or the return of our last unit, so this, this afternoon, when that clock started. So what they do, that company gets paid by the state of Florida to do that. The reason it's going to be 30 to 60 days, and what I understand from the company is that, since they have two state emergencies so close together, it's gonna be a little longer than what it normally is. She assured me, we should be seeing and checking around day 45. We need to, um, I feel we need to pay our guys that went down there. This pay period, um, they stayed on for eight days, got two showers and almost slept in a bed for one night. And I feel like we need to go get and pay them. Tammy wasn't sure on that, so she wanted to bring it before y'all. Uh, we paid the EMTs, which was three of them, we had to do the cruise walk while we were down there to Quentin to get back, uh, to make it to his full-time employer on Saturday. Uh, we paid the EMTs $4 an hour, and the paramedic's 50, and that was based off, uh, uh, other companies, what they pay their people on storm. I know I ran that by you when I had to make that phone call Saturday. Currently, when we add a, what we were paying collectively would be, uh, $31,310. We have around $67,000 in our overflow account. And my proposal would be to go ahead and pay those guys at the overflow account, reimburse overflow account when our shaker arrives from Packer. And I don't know if there are any other suggestions or ideas on how you want to do that?
That's a net, Chief, of about, if the stars line up, of about 40, uh, 46,000 dollars.
Yeah. And we had to, they provided fuel while we were there. Uh, we had to buy some fuel going down there and coming back. Um, and we had to make a couple, um, ALS advanced life support transports to Miami to get critical patients out of hospital, down there in hospitals, I think, so. Uh, and we had to buy that fuel back to the old fuel truck to plant everything. Uh, so we were gonna have some fuel on, uh, on that, and I had to buy, I think, a gallon of that fluid as well.
Were we able to finish the, was, was pretty, everything down there pretty much finished? I mean?
Yes.
Job completed?
Luckily, it was no, no events, um, it all went smoothly. Had to find the guys to shower, the company's shower was broke, and then when the few guys got a shower, we was able to get them one.
So I guess you're, uh, the, the question here before us immediately is, uh, payment to our crew?
Yes.
Which is, uh, 31310. And this is to be reimbursed along with the other from, uh, the, uh, Packer?
Packer Emergency Medical Services.
Any, um, any questions, guys?
45 to 90 days, or six to that, will we get reimbursed?
30 to 60. Uh, I got an email from their CFO, COO or CFO. Uh, she says she feels like it'd be about 45 days.
You say y'all got the money to pay it?
Yes.
I know in the past, there's been questions with federal money to come down. There was employees that didn't think it should be taxed, and vice versa. Has all that been arranged and figured out?
Yes, they have to be taxed.
Well, I know that was the case last time, but there were two.
It was a question on our safer grant, whenever we get a stop and pay. We had to go from 1099 to giving them second tax.
All right, um, is there a, I guess we've got a, and you're talking about out of EMS overflow, so you're not talking about y'all's general one? We got a, any, is there a motion, uh, for, to, I guess, to compensate our crew for the time spent, um, in South Florida to be reimbursed by Packer EMS with an, I guess, we'll say, hopefully 45 to 60, that is, um, out of EMS overflow funds to go ahead and compensate our crew? Is there a motion asking, uh, $31,310?
How much money do I have on overflow?
Uh, right at $67,000.
Do you want that on this week's paycheck or coming up next paycheck?
Uh, I would like to do it this week.
Tammy?
The hours were, it would be this week's paycheck. Well, the Saturday should be in probably not the same, same pay period. I want our pay period in Saturday.
That's what I'm asking. Sorry to be rude, that's what I'm asking.
But there's only one day.
Yeah, we've got a crew returning today.
You want to pay all of it together, even while we're trying to do that, you're gonna be really taken away.
I would like to do that if they were to have that.
Why? Why, why do you want to get in advance on the pay for the crews who return today? Instead of it going for it next February?
Uh, I guess because they've already worked the hours, um, and just go ahead and.
Well, I know, but I mean, I work all day today, but I'm gonna get paid tomorrow. So I'm saying, it, it doesn't matter.
I mean, it would just, it would be easier if we just go ahead and do the math and just put in the work on Tammy. I think, but I mean, that's up to y'all.
All right, I'm making a motion that we pay the, uh, the payroll that is due to the employees for their deployment time from start to finish at, uh, Operation Chief Ho's request this week.
All right, got a motion, and that's 31310 out of EMS overflow funds. Got a motion, is there a second? Second by council member Davis. Any more, um, questions or, uh, of Chief Ho? All right, here none. Everybody in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried.
No, I'm not, no.
Well, I said motion carried, now unanimously.
Yeah, uh, so I, I thank y'all for that. I also wanted to, I know he's gonna be here, but I want to thank you publicly. Uh, Mr. Stokes, he donated a, um, rental car and fuel to do a cruise walk for a guy that needed to be back in Dublin, um, to be a worker for Theo to swap out of Quentin. Uh, we're in a time crunch, and, uh, Mr. Stokes, he donated that rental car and fuel money and food money, and then he accounted for that. I appreciate it. He also set up a, he has an hour radio app. And he put all of our crew members on, including Troy, Wilkes-Barre, Enterprise, uh, three of ours. That way we could talk, we could talk from on the radio from my house to Tampa. And he set that up for us, and it worked out well, we appreciate it.
Thank you. We can tell what was going on when we had our people.
That's right. They, they, they made every third or four thousand.
Thank y'all. And, um, any other, do you have any other requests or issues we need to, to look at? I want to thank our, all of our department heads. Um, it's been a, it's been a very busy few months. Um, we've had a lot of different things going on, um, in every department. We've had police, we've hired, we've hired new people, we've got equipment issues there. We bought new equipment for street. Um, we've had a payment project, we've had this with EMS in the last week with a, a project that they were dedicated to. So I'm, I know we all feel appreciative, a lot of, um, good talks for our department heads. And thank y'all for being here tonight, um, and just doing what you do. Thank you to everybody that makes that happen, and our people, our workers here in the city.
Mayor, before you go, folks, can I just say, I say? So for the record, I want everyone here to know and understand, especially in this room that can hear, especially the folks that may be on Mr. Stokes's site later. What I'm about to ask is not a complaint in any way. First of all, I support our first responders, I support the mission they went on, and I support boots on the ground. As a former police chief, I understand a need for mutual aid. We may need it here tomorrow, and we want as many people here as we can to be here. So understand, I have no problem with the mission, no problem with the boots on the ground and the work that was done, it was needed. So I want that to be very clear, and I think. So I want that to be very clear, and I think Brandy knows I support the rescue squad, without a doubt, I support all first responders. So problem I need for myself figured out is how, going forward, permission is granted for our departments to make decisions like that. And this is not a pile trip for me, I promise you, but as a councilman, we are elected to be steward, to do the best job we can, make the best decisions we can for our town, employees, and citizens. We never knew, as a council, I say a council member, I don't speak for anybody else, never had the opportunity to ask questions or discuss this mission. I found out about it on Facebook, I immediately started receiving calls, all I could tell them was I had no idea, but I looked into it. And that's kind of embarrassing for a council member to be put in that position. So my first question to, to Mr. Hoagie or Brandy, I can tell he ran over friends, who authorized this mission?
I contacted the mayor Saturday around lunch. The contact was made through Enterprise Rescue, Packer was looking for additional ambulances because it was the largest ambulance evacuation in history of our country. Enterprise Rescue said that they're looking for subcontractors, it's a good way to make money, but number one, we gotta get people out of there, they need somebody like, um, emergent, like we got triggered up. So I called, um, tried to call the mayor, he was busy, um, hung up the phone, called Councilman Garrett, we didn't get out, what did we talk for, maybe twelve minutes? We were running it by him, uh, talking the distance and, um, paid for the members, and, uh, the mayor called me back. Kyle was on number one calls during this whole time period, uh, that would get out with him, he said he coordinated with the mayor, that he almost knew, I'm, I'm good with it. And we, we came to the agreement that we would go ahead and go, it was emergency, uh, we had the people to do it. I came back to my house, got the schedule out, made sure we were staffed, uh, made sure the two trucks that were staying in town were serviced, uh, had the members do a full maintenance check on, tire check, um, and, um, they rolled out.
I understand the meeting, short rush time and all that, but in today's technology, if it had not been a group text somehow, uh, another couple of phone calls made at some point, I see if other council members need to be informed about it, or even asked? Or was, once the mayor gave you permission, that was all permission you needed?
If somebody, like I said, if somebody can provide me a, like a standard operating guideline or something, that's what I would prefer, if y'all could do that.
That's what I'm thinking, so for me, it's on the same, me and Brandon have talked, I want everybody to know, me and Brandon have talked, we're on the same page. As far as an operating procedure, I think, as a former department head, department heads have the operating procedures within the department, we are talking about a procedural issue on the councils and department heads, which we need to let them know, all department heads. I mean, just for instance, he's asked permission for twelve hundred dollars, but we didn't get permission to send two ambulances and two crews out of town. So, so they're a little confused, as we are, as what we expect from them. So, I don't know if, if, if this is a legal question, or if this is a question the mayor can answer, or the council can answer, but should we be informed on major decisions like this? And if so, how do we go about letting our department heads know that? So they understand, hey, I've only got three hours, but I've got to let the council know, or even the mayor, say, hey, uh, give me just a minute, Brandon, if you pause some people, we'll see what they say. You know, a free hour, I understand how to go, and I just can't understand the fact that we weren't notified by anybody or anyhow, except from Facebook and my citizens column.
Guys, I didn't, you know, if, if, if I've got to type, you know, the rap on that, as far as the timing, I guess I will, I mean, if I, Brandon did, we had a good talk, I thought I asked the questions that I need to, that I needed to ask. We had a, um, and I didn't, I didn't call a meeting, it was, it was on Saturday, I believe, it was late on a Saturday afternoon, I guess the only thing that we could have feasibly done would have been some type of, uh, some type of emergency meeting early Sunday morning, or mid-Sunday morning, you know, I didn't do that, so, I mean, if, if y'all want to call that on me, that's on me, I mean, I, you know.
Jason, should do, do we make a policy or something like that for department heads? I mean, how, how, how do we decide what is the, the cutoff, because the mayor has authority to do some things that, that, you know, he may be legally justified to do what he did, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying for future references, how do we enact something that the council should be informed of?
I don't know, what are you proposing?
I mean, you can do it, that's only you can add to, that's the manual, and department head, you know, before any decision is made over X amount of expenditure, you know, especially calling, he has to come and play, or whatever, I mean, you can do lots of things. So it's, it's all of us to just set that up, to make that work feasible for all the department heads, okay? And again, please, everybody listen, I am not against our first responders, I understand that I support them, I'm glad they win, I'm glad we had goodwill, because Lord knows, like I said, we can need it tomorrow before we go to bed tonight, something's happened here that we're gonna need help. So I commend you guys for going, again, I had no problem with that, it was just, I felt, I say personally felt disrespected for not, not having the chance to ask questions or even know. As a council member, we had two ambulances and two crews out of town. And it would, it was just, it did sit well with me the way it went down, but I'm not, I'm not complaining, y'all, understand that, let the guys know, because things get took out of proportion, things get stretched, and you talk about that on the phone. I support you guys, glad y'all win, I just felt like we should have been informed about it, and that's the bottom line I'm trying to get across here.
My, my request would be is, we operate off of a huge stack of standard operating procedures, standard operating guidelines, and that's what we fall back on. Now, my ask from y'all is, we need something on that to go by. I don't want to go all word of mouth, or just a verbal, say, hey, wait a minute, I want something, and write what we need to follow, put the T, so none of us get trouble.
I agree with my order, I think works out there. And I will give you and Kyle, and you put a job on that, but we need something, one, to help cover you guys, and also help cover us as a city and entity, to make sure that that we are doing things the right way. So, again, thank y'all for letting me vent there just a little bit, I hope anybody else got any more questions, but, uh, bottom lining is, I do support them, please don't misunderstand that. But I think you would agree with me, we need a better communication system on, on things like this between a department and the council, not just you, but any department, so, thank y'all for allowing me that time to speak.
I appreciate it, you know, it's a word articulated in such a, a fashion, I appreciate it. I agree, I'll, I'll help out wherever I can. When you and I spoke earlier, it, it's not like something that took place, you know, twelve days ago, when it was last, two Saturdays ago. It's not like this happened, it's not a regular occurring event, so, uh, first time for everything. Like I said, uh, civil conversation, and two or heads always relevant, and just get together and work on it, just make it for future council and town members, just make it better.
All right, guys, anything else from the council? We definitely need to have something in place, uh, because our equipment is a city that was struggling for, you know, July red, I mean, I went out, because I got a phone call, because the red got rolled out, and I heard the council was notified, saying, well, I'll be here for the, it's a toll.
I had no idea, it was a holiday day, so we hadn't heard from you this time.
But it's definitely something to be put in place.
I just got a quick question on that, before we cut y'all, because we don't authorize runs, were we supposed to be out there? I don't know, I'm asking.
We got a request from one online officer, the Oakdale Fire Department, calling into the station, from what I understand, uh, asking to go check on one of their employees, they thought that maybe something wrong was in the short floor. They called into the station, my understanding, and asked that, uh, and the employee's address was a spoken address, but we know something may have been, it's not always, yeah. So we had two newer members on there that live here, they weren't aware, they were just outside of our jurisdiction. That's where they were building at the time. They did not call out on the radio, so the call card was not created, and that has been addressed. So that is where that issue...
Could that have been a run from the Crown vehicle instead of an ambulance, doing a welfare check?
It could have been, but, or no Crown vehicle, I mean, I had it covered in town.
Wouldn't ambulance have better service cover talent for Callco?
I, I, you, I don't know how to answer that, I mean, that could be...
There's a lot of hills in that, I understand, thank you.
I'm good.
Thank y'all, please. Thank y'all, guys, anything else, uh, council members? Thank y'all, uh, department heads, anything from, uh, the board?
And I wanted to come and say thank you for what y'all did. Don White sent me an email about campground being open, Black Fire Department sent me an email about a campground being open, ambulance going with the people, and I was just when you started talking, look, the death toll stands at twenty-two as of Monday afternoon down there, and I thought it was a show of Christian love, y'all sending the ambulance down there, help take care of the people, I think, and one of the conversations that I heard on the radio, on the app, had a thousand patients on ventilators that they had to move from, uh, one nursing home to another nursing home, and listening to them on the app, they worked their butts off. And y'all are to be committed, people know where to go, come get tomatoes now, and, uh, Slocum, it was really appreciated down there, because I did get some text messages from there, and not just Slocum, but Enterprise and Wilkes-Barre and Troy. So, yeah, number that, normally I come when there's controversy, but tonight, it was not about controversy, it was to compliment Don White, Henry Hicks, Tony Davis, Rob Henson, Joe Miles, and Travis Garrett, for y'all supporting and letting your people go to try to save lives, because that's the name of the game. And we're all brothers and sisters, no matter, you know, county lines and state lines and city limits, it's for you political leaders, it's not for emergency responders. And, uh, when they had the emergency, because that could have happened here, because if you remember a few years ago, uh, Enterprise Alabama was wiped out, okay? So it could happen down in Jackson County, uh, several years ago, when they had theirs, sheriff could run home and check on his wife, then he got trapped, and he couldn't get out. Well, guess what also happened? His sheriff's office was wiped out, his radio system was wiped out, right down there in Mary Island, Florida. So, uh, people who say there's no God, you need to leave the storm, and you realize there's God, and how quick things, that was once standing, it's no longer gone, but I wanted to compliment each one of y'all for supporting them, what y'all did on the campground, to try to help people, because that's what we're here for.
Speaking of that, you know, out, out of, out of tragedy, I want to cut y'all, Mr. Stokes, out of tragedy sometimes comes good things. I've been told that the E and A Director, Brian Smith, was wanting to get with places like Black and ourselves, because we've never had opened up campgrounds before, but through the work the mayor and the council has put in, getting these RVs, because we had some spaces available, but he wants to get with us and try to figure out where and how we can post things for future events that folks notice, that folks can go to one place and look at local places that may need things, so you may be a lot a part of that, if you know how to set something up, reach out to Brian or something like that, but, but he's looking to, to create a, a place where out-of-towners can go to one site and find where all these places are, that, uh, Dogland's filled up, Enterprise, things like that, because a lot of folks don't go up there and struggle with that, you know?
But, but thank you for what you do, and do, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comments, Rick, thank you, thank you. And what he said, you, uh, I, I got Austin, the fuel truck, uh, supplement to substitute a crew member.
Yeah, 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 that's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Those are the least I could do.
Thank you. Of the comments, yes, sir, Steve?
I'd just like to compliment the council on supplying the street with some things, which quickly they need to do the job they're doing, because you can tell the difference in the community, it looks good, and I appreciate what you do on the weekends with your tractor out there, cutting that, and everybody's...
That's all we're doing.
Well, I know, I know, but you can see the difference in the, I can get it.
And I have way to go.
Well, I know.
Thanks, Steve, thank you. We, we rarely get a, we, we rarely get a, a, a big praise in here, so, we, we, we appreciate that. Not I, not individual, but we appreciate it.
Well, you all deserve it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, there was, uh, Derek, he, he mentioned about Kansas City, yes, we gonna need some police over there, because Saturday, I was coming up between Ms. Edna and what, man, I got back there, them little kids, they was playing the road, they screwed his thing, because you know, they, pay road, and you can get out there and play now. Car come around that corner, like to hit those kids. I mean, we gonna need it, because them kids is playing out there in the street, and one of them kids out there, he's autistic, and he was out there. Like I said, when the car come around the curve, I had to jump, I tried to wave him down, they were hitting those kids.
Figuring out on that, chief, uh, the other question, Mr. Peoples had mentioned earlier today, was children at play?
Yeah.
Signs of children, that?
We actually, we had some signs, but I don't have that many, so I gave them all, so...
Well, pray Ms. Edna and Ms., uh, Evelyn, when the kids are playing, they're going there, because the kids got air, he's pointing roads.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Thank you. Just, anything else, y'all, before we cut anybody out? Yes, sir?
Yeah, uh, I would like to know, if you all can get some signs put up on twenty-eight, up on the hill there, some, I don't give, I mean, you know, the speed limit, there should be a speed limit on there, I mean, they're coming up with this hill, we got all the elderly people that live up on top of the hill, and they're coming both ways, and they're running sixty, fifty, about sixty miles an hour. I think that it's supposed to be city limits, there used to be a sign down the bottom of the hill, that, that down there.
What's left of it, yeah.
But, I mean, I, you know, you got a sign down, down by Cam, that says thirty-five, for when they get on the hill there, they're running sixty, about seven, they got these trailers behind these, uh, pickups, and, you know, hoes and things on them, and, and there's no way they gonna stop with someone pull out the driveway, and Tony knows that, I'm telling Tony about this.
Well, we mentioned earlier, plus, uh, market fuel, look at that, combine that with the chief, with, we've got new roads, we've got new pavement, we've got new areas of talent that are open up, so, opened up, so, um, let's look at it all and see where we need signs, and if we got to spend more money buying the speed limit signs, or children at play signs, or stop signs, we need to do that. I mean, I don't want to nickel and dime, I don't want to nickel and dime a speed limit sign, you know, over ten or fifteen dollars, if that's what we need to be put up, but let's, let's try to do that.
Chief, make that sound like you can make two or three for perhaps a one we order, so, or learn us something, give them, for a month.
Yeah, let's do that, pretty quick. Anything else, folks? Thank everybody for your comments that, um, that were here. I do want to say I want to pass around, uh, just, council members, we do have the, uh, Second Congressional Municipal Dinner in Meeting, it's on the fourth, that's the ninth correlation date, November fourth, Lake Affairs that week is what, I bet. That's five thirty in Civic Center, it will be, it's noteworthy to say it will be the last one, I believe, because we're no longer in the Second Congressional District, we're in the First, which is anchored out of Mobile and Baldwin, so I bet it'll be somewhere over there this time next week, so, might be the last one. So, good dinner, I'm, I'm gonna leave a sign up, Ben, in your, in the clerk's office, and that will be in her office, we've got a few signed up, and the, at Ketchum's, Geneva County Farm City Nightmare, which is always a great event, uh, we'll talk about the business of the year at the next meeting, that will be November twenty-first, that's on Thursday night, November twenty-one at Ketchum's. So, I've already got a few of y'all listed there, I think I got everybody accounted for there, but that will also be in the clerk's office, so if there's, uh, no other business, the next meeting is October twenty-eighth. Any other business to discuss? Very much in two adjournments? White, Miles, all the folks, all right, please adjourn, thank y'all. We're all prepared.